I had a pitch. Because your article was long, and Jerry Woods, and I think he's been in competition. He just wanted to give it to you.
I think that's the way that, uh, Jerry has, he, and what is his name, right?
This one, he has said, will start to move. Two, four, six, yes.
Okay.
This one is the last one.
The House has to reach a commission.
But there's probably a chance. Right. So we're still.
We have to spread for the holiday.
But day, my holidays.
Yeah, yeah, about a month will be a little staggered. They won't all be coming along for the same time. But I would much rather have.
And, um, it was not going to be so. Yeah, so. It would be a long, short, so. He worked for last night. He goes, let me give you my card.
So keep this as.
Wait a minute. He goes, no, this is CH. You just got off of this? He goes, yeah. I said, yeah, we're putting some stuff together.
It's the first time I've been there.
Yeah. I'll see you all over. I'll take, you know what? This year is the first time. If you want to take some time off. I mean, first days on the ball. Best days on Christmas. Year's fall on Thursday.
Yeah.
Because people just take pride out. Gives you a weekend. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. But if it's fall and Saturday, you remind that you're back there to get a.
They are. I'll let them know. It's five months, four, and then it.
Charles, Charlie picked up stuff from us. And they're, and they're all in town. That's the, the county administration tomorrow.
Well, no, it's just, it's only a water line. It's, you know, the grand, the grand, the state. I said, I told all of them.
That's a.
But yes, we get in six, seven, eight.
These. Well, tag, so.
I mean, it should take, just like.
Ten, ten thousand dollars. Two thousand dollars. It's okay. But it was.
I'm sorry.
Actually, I'll pay any one to, to, to.
Yeah. Come on. They still have. They just came in with letters of applause. Why? I guess she claims it's all kind of true.
Probably does, though. Well, then you.
I don't know. That's what they say when you move.
But I think you can.
That's the hard copy of a high and nice survey.
Oh. Are we good? You have a place. There's gonna be a deal or two.
Yeah, all that's good. I don't make that.
Yeah. Right. So.
Between more sessions. Nine D, but we've been using the back lines. The D's set the back line. He just couldn't resolve the, with any dedication of right of way. But she's selling.
Yeah.
These people are so.
I mean, I'm a little. We've closed on topic before. We're. I was heard.
And, uh, Dr. Paul.
Yeah. David, are we ready?
Anytime you say.
If you'd read.
That'll change that. There, there, there's a rest, he goes.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Nick, Chris? Chris?
You're ready?
Good to see you.
All right, sorry.
Oh, good evening. Before we get started, I want to welcome Reverend Patrick Abent from Interquest Church, who will lead us tonight in our invocation.
All right, so let's just close our eyes for a moment. And as we close our eyes and just breathe easy, just, we let go of the busyness of this day. And we allow that peace to fill us as we prepare for the business of this night. Father, I ask a blessing upon this meeting this night. I ask a blessing upon these council members, upon Mayor Lockwood, and a blessing upon the city of Milton. I ask that we all are open to make wise choices, to be strong in our commitment and conviction to this city, and to allow your wisdom to flow through us. I call forth a blessed year for the city of Milton. May 2011 allow this city to grow and expand to heights we could hardly imagine. Bless this leadership with divine stewardship as they make the choices and decisions that lead this city to greater heights. Bless this meeting this night. Bless all who are in attendance as we call forth the highest good for all. And so it is. Amen.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call this meeting for the Milton City Council for Wednesday, January 5th, 2011, to order. Will City Clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We'll be happy to call roll for Jan. 5th, 2011 regular meeting. However, I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in order that the speaker cards were received by the City Clerk staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. When you hear the bell, you have 30 seconds to complete your remarks. The City Council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided however that such an individual has filed a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the City Clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within this chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Julie Zoner Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longord.
Here.
Councilmember Alan Tartt.
Here.
Would everyone please rise with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Want to welcome everybody here, but besides the Reverend and the press, and Ken's the only one here from the public, so you could tell it must be a light agenda. Nothing controversial, so. Never know. Will the City Clerk please sound the next item?
Our next item is approval of meeting agenda. This is agenda item number 11-001.
Anybody have any other items to consider?
Just want to do a quick executive session on land acquisition.
Okay. Anything else? All right, do we have a motion and a second?
Mayor, I move to approve the agenda with the addition of the executive session for land acquisition.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Do I need to read the public comment, Ken, if there's no public comment?
There is no public comment, sir.
Okay. I'll save you guys from that speech. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Will City Clerk please sound the item?
Our first item is approval of the December 20th, 2010 special call work session. Agenda item number 11-002. Next is approval of the December 20th, 2010 regular minutes. Agenda item number 11-003. Third is approval of a task order with Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., for design of intersection improvements at Hopewell Road and Cogburn Road in the amount of $95,005. Agenda item number 11-004. Next, approval of a contract for grading services with Cook Construction Services, Inc., in the amount of $1,980. Agenda item number 11-005. Our fifth item is approval of a construction services agreement with Tamal Corporation doing businesses, Wildcat Striping and Sealing Company, for guard rail replacement on the Cogburn Road Bridge in the amount of $1,996. This is agenda item number 11-006. Our final consent item is approval of a contract with Malden and Jenkins, LLC, to audit the city's financial statements for the fiscal year ending September, 2010. Agenda item number 11-007.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by, Councilmember Luss, second by Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, there's no, no items under reports and presentations. First presentation, public hearings, or zoning agenda tonight, so I'm gonna move on to unfinished business. Will City Clerk please sound that item?
Approval of an ordinance to adopt the amended local emergency operations plan. Agenda item number 10-1314. This was first presented on December 20th, 2010. Mr. Matt Marietta.
Good evening. This amended operations plan, when we first wrote it, part of the, the standard of, of the profession is that it's updated as circumstances in the city have changed. We had a major change in our circumstances last year, so I have rewritten this that, in a fashion that doesn't quite so heavily depend on a public-private partnership. So that's pretty much the main change that is in this document. If you, if you have read it, or if you, you perused the copy that was given to you, the, the main changes have been highlighted in blue, so it's easier to go through. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Do we have any questions for Matt? Okay. You're doing a good job, Matt.
I was gonna ask how many titles he has.
All right. Well, there's no questions, and I'll put it up for a motion and a second.
I'd like to make the motion to approve agenda item 10-1314. Approval of an ordinance to adopt the amended local emergency operations plan.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Bailey. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. City Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is approval of an ordinance to adopt the job classification listing for current approved positions. Agenda item number 10-1315. This was first presented on December 20th, 2010. Mr. Sam Traeger.
Mayor, Council, I think I'm just gonna handle this one tonight. Seven, I talked before we walked in here. This is really a cleanup. If you go to your budget documents, as you recall, we try to pass amendments every year we have a budget because the charter requires that the positions that exist in the city be created and approved by the council. Go to your budget document, you will see that we adopted three pages, not the fourth. Thankfully, in a budget document, if one page has to be missing, I'm glad it's one that has no numbers on it. So this is really to clean that up and just acknowledge the fact that the Community Development Department and the Public Works Department exist in keeping in fashion of the way we've approved the budget before. You'll also see on here in the Community Development Department, if you happen to catch or look that close, I'll bring your eyes, attention to it, is the position that you all funded is kind of an environmental sustainability coordinator. Remember, you funded that in the budget. That is being created on this chart as well, just so we can move forward and implement, actually take some action on what you funded back in October. So that is, all this is, is a cleanup for the budget document, and we had to do it by ordinance, which is why this is being brought forward.
Okay, does anybody have a question on that, Chris or Sam's in the audience here?
I guess I should highlight, too, there's no, there's no funding impact with this. There's no, no anything other than cleaning up positions that already exist in the city.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Do I have a motion and a second?
Mayor, I'll put forward a motion to approve agenda item number 10-1315, which is the approval of an ordinance to adopt the job classification listing for current approved positions.
Second motion.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Tartt, I believe. It's close there. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to new business. The City Clerk wants to sound, sound the next item.
Approval of a resolution establishing the five ethics principles for the conduct of city officials of the city of Milton, Georgia. This is agenda item number 11-008. Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor, Council, this again is a formality, but I want to give you a little bit of background on this one because I think anytime we can talk about the principles of ethics, it's important to do so more than just in the formality setting. As you're aware, we are a certified city of ethics through GMA. It is a four-year recertification process, meaning we are going to have to be recertified every four years. We were notified by GMA that based on our initial certification, we will be recertified on, in June of 2011. There's two requirements that go into being recertified. One is that we send to GMA a current copy of our ethics ordinance as it exists. The second is that the council formally adopt a resolution reaffirming their adherence to the five principles that are listed in section one on the resolution. So that's why this is before you. This isn't something new. You should start to see this now every four years as we become recertified as a city of ethics, just so that we can bring your attention to it, as well as our staff that are here. Those five principles, number one, serve others, not ourselves. Number two, use resources with efficiency and economy. Number three, treat all people fairly. Number four, use the power of our position for the well-being of our constituents. And number five, create an environment of honesty, openness, and integrity. All important things that I think to bring our attention to. Probably more than every four years, but specifically tonight, this will allow us to be recertified as a city of ethics with GMA.
Okay. Is there any questions on this, or any discussion? Just glad that we are a city of ethics. Glad to be recertified. Do I have a motion and a second?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 11-008. A resolution establishing the five ethics principles for the conduct of city officials of the city of Milton.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Tartt, second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Will the City Clerk please sound the next item?
Next item is approval of a resolution, amending resolution number 10-12165. Appointing a member to the Historic Preservation Commission for the city of Milton by appointing a member for District Four. This is agenda item number 11-009. Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
I'm pleased to announce Ken Sisson is my nominee for Historic Preservation Commission. Ken sought me out and had interest in this position, and that's always nice to have somebody that wants to do it. So, Ken, I thank you. Ken is born, was born and raised in Georgia, and, born in Savannah, and he is currently the president of Rogers Electric, a national electrical contractor based here in Atlanta. Prior to that, he was in general construction, and his businesses were involved in the adaptive reuse of historical properties, so he'll be a unique perspective to that. I'm most proud of the fact that he earned a BS in building construction and an MBA from Auburn University. And he and his wife Kathy have lived in North Fulton since 1987, and what's now Milton, since 1998, and they have two children are involved in their activities. So I put forth Mr. Ken Sisson.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or any discussion on that? All right.
Mayor, I have just one question. Based on our, my appointee, do we confirm that that term runs through 2012?
I discussed this with our attorney, Ken Gerard, and we've come to the conclusion that due to the ordinance, which says three years for each appointee, one of the other staff members was thinking about staggering, and that's why this was done this way. But since this isn't ordinance, and we need to be held to it, I did talk with Mr. Gerard, and we're going to stay with the ordinance, but change the language a little bit so it shows that we are staggering 2012 end, and then also 2013. So we'll have three coming off one year, and then three the next year. But we will reflect that in an ordinance to bring that into a council meeting.
Okay. And that makes a lot of sense. Councilmember Tartt, I would just feel more comfortable if it was done.
And just to clarify, so, for example, Mr. Sisson, his term will be for three years at this point, even though Mr. Hewitt's term is up, I believe, the end of this year, so.
It will, it will end December 31st of 2012.
2012.
We will.
Two years, okay.
District, the two, four, and six will end in 2012.
Okay.
At-large, one, three, and five will end in 2013.
Okay.
And that will take care of the staggering.
Can I just ask one question? How do we determine which is two years and which is three years?
Well, the way I understand it, that's what we're, that's what the amendment is gonna do, and that will be incorporated into the amendment to identify that.
And I think it's with, with the election terms, two, four, and six, and then at-large, one, three, and five.
Just a function of that. And then people can always be reappointed.
And it specifically calls that out, like in sort of consecutive terms.
Correct. Thank you. So it's really just a function of staggering, but anybody can be reappointed at some point to that particular.
Or re, yeah. Or if there's a new council member that.
Correct.
And that person was doing a good job, they can just re.
Correct.
Appoint them at the end of the term.
And it does speak of concurrent terms, so, in the ordinance.
Is it clear? Because it's about as clear as mud.
I think.
And to add to the confusion, I'm not really sure what the motion was. As a matter of fact, I, I, I don't know what the motion was, or the amendment was when I, mine was appointed, whether mine was, actually went in the resolution as 2011, or that it was 2012. I know it was written 2012.
It was 2012.
I'm not sure what the motion was, though.
This is what we need to do with, with this particular ordinance. One is, is we've got an ordinance that exists today that says three years. And for anybody who's been appointed or is appointed tonight, they're gonna travel with that ordinance, which is three years. If that ordinance needs to change, it will come back to you as an ordinance amendment, which then you will have the ability to either take the direction and approve what we present to you, or modify. But we're not trying to ad lib an ordinance change. It just doesn't work that way. You know, what they get approved tonight under is going to be the ordinance as it exists today, and then wait for us to bring something back to you that cleans this up. It is a spot that needs to be cleaned up, but that doesn't mean we need to not move forward with the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay, so just to clarify, Mr. Sisson is being appointed for three years.
That's right. That's what, yes, that's the ordinance in place tonight, and that's what we're gonna move under.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion and a second?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item number 11-009. Approval of a resolution, amending resolution number 10-12-165. Appointing a member to the Historic Preservation Commission for the city of Milton.
I'll second the motion. I'm so sorry, were you done?
No, that's fine. I think that's enough of it.
I'm so sorry.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thurman, second by Councilmember Bailey. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
That's unanimous. And Ken, if you want to step forward, I'll give you your.
That's okay.
I think we're nowhere from.
I do solemnly swear in the firm.
I do solemnly swear in the firm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
The Historic Preservation Committee.
The Historic Preservation Committee.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Thank you. Did you look in and write the eye with your film then?
Yeah.
Because he looked at me with these big wide eyes.
Thank you.
I wrote it home.
All right. Let's see. Move on to reports. I don't really have any formal to report on, but I just hope everyone had a great holiday. Merry Christmas. Happy New Years, and look forward to moving forward with the city of Milton in 2011. So we'll have a, have a great year. So is there anything anybody on council wants to mention? Julie?
I just wanted to thank those that participated in Bring One for the Chipper between staff, support, members of Milton Grows Green, volunteers, scouts, students, beta members. It was another successful opportunity for community members to come together and to recycle all of those Christmas trees. So just thanks to everybody, including community members, any of those on council that were able to get their trees to one of those three sites, thank you. Just to let everybody know, the mulch from that recycling activity will go to Cradwell Crossing Elementary, so it'll go back to the community, and it'll also go to Kings Ridge School there at Bethany and Cogburn. So just thanks to everybody.
Good deal. All right. Do we have any reports from staff?
Just a couple. Coming off of holiday season, so not, a whole lot to report. I, too, am glad everybody had a, hopefully had a good holiday, safe travels wherever they might have been. Coming up, just to, since we won't meet again, I don't guess until this actually happens, the North Fulton Mayor's Association meeting will be held here on January 20th. It's our month to host. That's in the morning. Strategic planning kicks off again this week on Friday with our, with our next step. We're still on a, about a four-month deliverable for you. You should see updates from us February, March, and April, so look for those. I want to just put in your head now, and I'll be coming back several times with this topic, but just so that you start to think about it, we're working as a staff, partnering with the high school, with the AP Government class for this spring semester. We will be holding a mock city council with the youth, the student, AP Government students. So I tell this to you because somebody's gonna become you for the purpose of that mock council. Part of this learning process is not only to understand how a meeting works and how all the pieces of government come together to accomplish the business of the city, but also how each should respond in the different roles, which doesn't do me any good to sit and try to tell them how to be a mayor, how to be a council member, how to be a clerk, for that matter. But once we get these students assigned as we move through this semester, one of their jobs will be to reach out to you and try to figure out how to become you for the purpose of that mock council meeting. So it will culminate, I believe, the week of March the 15th. At least, that's where we're shooting for at this point. A little bit early, but we're gonna try to use it as one of our Georgia Cities Week events this year, and how we try to reach out to the community and bring them into a little bit about how government works. So I'll remind you again, probably February-ish, which isn't that far away now, that you're probably, that you're gonna be getting a phone call from a student, so that when they call you, please call them back, because it's gonna be contingent upon us helping them work through this process of a mock city, mock youth council. More steps in, in the fall. But bring your attention to that. Stacy's back, so if you have anything finance-related, she's back in the office, and we're full speed ahead. And the rest of it, I've got for the executive session.
Okay. And with that, do I have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session to discuss land acquisition?
Same.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Tartt, second by Councilmember Luss. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll adjourn into executive session. [applause][1547.12]
I don't really have any formal to report on, but I just hope everyone had a great holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, and look forward to moving forward with the City of Milton in 2011. So we'll have a, have a great year. So, is there anything anybody on council wants to mention?
I just wanted to thank those that participated in Bring One for the Chipper between staff support, members of Milton Groves Green, volunteers, scouts, students, beta members. It was another successful opportunity for community members to come together and to recycle all of those Christmas trees. So just thanks to everybody, including community members, any of those on council that were able to get their trees to one of those three sites, thank you. Just to let everybody know, the mulch from that recycling activity will go to Crapple Crossin Elementary. So it'll go back to the community, and it'll also go to Kings Ridge School there at Bethany and Cogburn. So just thanks to everybody.
Good deal. All right. Do we have any reports from staff?
Just a couple. Coming off of the holiday season, so not, a whole lot to report. I too am glad everybody had a, hopefully had a good holiday, safe travels wherever they might have been. Coming up, just to, since we won't meet again, I don't guess until this actually happens, the North Fulton Mayor's Association meeting will be held here on January 20th. It's our month to host. And that's in the morning. Strategic planning kicks off again this week on Friday with our, with our next step. We're still on about a four-month deliverable for you. You should see updates from us February, March, and April, so look for those. I want to just put in your head now, and I'll be coming back several times with this topic, but just so that you start to think about it, we're working as a staff, partnering with the high school, with the AP Government class for this spring semester. We will be holding a mock city council with the youth, the student, AP Government students. So I tell this to you because somebody's going to become you for the purpose of that mock council. Part of this learning process is not only to understand how a meeting works and how all the pieces of government come together to accomplish the business of the city, but also how each should respond in the different roles, which doesn't do me any good to sit and try to tell them how to be a mayor, how to be a council member, how to be a clerk for that matter. But once we get these students assigned as we move through this semester, one of their jobs will be to reach out to you and try to figure out how to become you for the purpose of that mock council meeting. So it will culminate, I believe, the week of March the 15th. At least that's where we're shooting for at this point. A little bit early, but we're going to try to use it as one of our Georgia Cities Week events this year and how we try to reach out to the community and bring them into a little bit about how government works. So I'll remind you again, probably February-ish, which isn't that far away now, that you're probably, that you're going to be getting a phone call from a student so that when they call you, please call them back because it's going to be contingent upon us helping them work through this process of a mock city, mock youth council. More steps in, in the fall. Bring your attention to that, Stacy's back. So if you have anything finance-related, she's back in the office and we're full speed ahead. And the rest of it I've got for the executive session.
Okay. And with that, do I have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session to discuss land acquisition?
Same way. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Carr, second by Councilmember Loos. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll adjourn into executive session.